Christie.
And first by Downing, second by your suggestion to approve the bill, it's all in favor.
Aye.
Post.
Thank you. Thank you. Next we have public comments that is running the audience, has anything to talk about, now be silent. Okay, next move on to public hearing, so I will close the council hearing, open up a public hearing on an ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash zero seven, amending section two dot zero four dot one four oh of municipal code relating to ordinances. And this is the second reading of this petition, is there anybody in the audience that has something they'd like to say? Okay, moving to the audience, so we'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing and take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash oh seven, amending chapter two point zero four dash one forty, ordinances.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of comments. Mr. Mayor, a couple of things I want to point out, the city originally had only intended one public hearing for this ordinance at the first public meeting, I was hoping that the city, the Minister Scott Simpson could clarify that they had included my proposed amendment of having two public hearings in this ordinance to and Mr. Simpson, could you also clarify that, council member Moore's recommendation of keeping it to two readings was also included in this?
Yeah, thank you, council member, we did include, we, oh, because in the discussion of the last council meeting, there was consensus that the two suggestions on my poster, councilman Downing won by councilman Morris said would be included, so that they are included in the subsequent packet here in front of me, so that those, both of those would be included. One was to have two to have a public hearing at each meeting, and then the other was to not require kind of automatic third meeting or a third hearing based on some changes to the ordinance, so the thought was, that we heard, was prefer two public hearings, one in each reading, but that, that's plenty of public notice and availability in the public to come and speak on any changes that would have been subsequent from the first reading, the second, and therefore a third, a triggering automatic third was not necessary, so those are incorporated.
Good, I mean, this is a huge deal, voting in favor of this will make our city a leader in the state to have enhanced public engagement. We're just a two-way street between the elected officials and everyone who lives here, where community members are welcome to come to their city hall and share what is important to them in a transparent way, all throughout the process with many ordinances, with this council answers to them, thank you, Mayor, and thank you also.
Any other, anything else on this one? Christie.
I have a first by Downing, a second by Beerset to approve the ordinance, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you, we're on consent agenda, first one is a resolution accepting donations and authorizing purchase of the fire safety trailer. This would, this resolution would approve the purchase of fire safety trailer from Mobile Concept for ninety-nine thousand four hundred and two dollars and thirty-three cents. Next one is a resolution approving or accepting bid for mill and overlay for modern paving, the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. And next one is a resolution acknowledging twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three strategic initiatives. And the last one is a resolution regarding wetland grant purchase for North, for the North Amistad for Seward. The resolution should authorize one hundred and nine thousand five hundred dollars to purchase three quarters, basically three quarters of the wetland mitigation credit, which is one hundred and fifty thousand per acre from the Nemets Wetland Mitigation Bank. You may want to poll anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to poll consent agenda item number five.
Okay, take motion on the rest?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent agenda items three, four, and six.
Second. Okay, first and second, any questions, Congress? Christie?
I'm first by all gained, a second by Beerset to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Downing, poll number five?
Poll number five, resolution acknowledging twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three strategic initiatives. I wanted to talk tonight about a plan that we could use, and we just came from a meeting about our housing authority in the future, about a direction we're going to go. So I'm, but I'm not going to make a motion tonight, and I'm, but I'm going to talk to her, try to amend anything, but I want the council to be aware of the possibility we have in our future. And I think it's something that we can agree on, an action plan I came up with, we can agree on. So we know that the max filled housing city calls for more affordable housing. In relation to our strategic plan, we just had a meeting on, we also just had a meeting on capital improvement before that. We know that portable housing is a strategic priority to our city. We also know that having our own biosolids facility may not be the correct direction for our strategic plan, and that staying in our current agreement may be more cost effective in the long run. I suspect it will be most likely come out of the workload. If that proves to be the point, we could use that opportunity to build what I'm calling TID twenty-two. TID twenty-two is an action plan I came up with, a puzzle piece that would do two very important things. TID twenty-two would be where the power plant is, where can you leave the hydro regeneration parts and be carried on the rest of that building and the adjacent property, and on the other side of that bridge would be part of that too as well. So both sides overlooking the dam and junction falls, and also the bus garage property, and a couple other locations within that area. And turning them to a market rate with the mix of affordable housing, like we have in front of City Hall. They are perfectly connected to the downtown and have access to recreational activities. They are perfect for what I believe the council should be looking towards. TID twenty-two to pay for the Lake George Stormwater Plan and the River Walk that we had discussed in the capital improvement meeting in a strategic way by giving the city more market rate and affordable housing. Getting a strategic goal of affordable housing and responsibly funding the Lake George Stormwater Plan and River Walk. So Lake George Plan being financed through a plan through a creation of a tax incremental district such as TID twenty-two or D that uses a mixed market rate and affordable housing, I believe would be the most responsible path forwards for our city to move us in doing the downtown plan. I'm not suggesting we amend the plans, but I just want to put that out there as a puzzle piece we can work on. Thank you, Mayor.
So are you okay with this?
Yes.
Make the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent agenda item number five.
Second. Any questions, Congress? Christie?
A motion to approve item number five, first by Downing, second by Morris, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, have the administrative report, if anybody has anything for Scott, or Scott, give anything for us?
I appreciate the council's approval of the accepting donations and authorizing the purchase of the fire safety trailer, item number three. Did want to mention appreciation for Chief Moody, I'm sorry, Chief Nelson. Maybe that was a slip there. Chief Moody is a division chief, so a division chief, Moody, Public Safety Education Officer Williams, the three of them spending several time, I know there was other members of the department that also did so in trying to allow us to move this up quicker in the CFP than we would have. And be able to do it with a hundred percent donations, I also want to acknowledge, or will be, I want to recommend is that we will be acknowledging all the donors. I want to specifically mention Alad Tech, which you'll see is one of the kickoff gifts that really kind of got our momentum started. There was a number of other community members and companies in the, in the community there that stepped up in, in a big way to fund this, so we're really proud to be able to continue this education, it's been a tool for us for a number of years. It was literally built by members of the fire department thirty-some years ago, and now are able to build it with the funds from the community, and I'm really proud of that, so I just want to make sure that we have a special thanks out there for those folks involved in that, otherwise I'd be happy to take questions.
I have another one here. Thank you, Mr. Ray. We are seeing a very clear raising of the level of COVID transmission in this area with a pattern that has occurred in other states. Occurs in Wisconsin, and we have no reason to believe that it will not. What steps are you preparing to take as a administrator, or would you recommend for the council to take to alleviate the transmission of COVID in the community? And ensuing physical and economic damage that that will cause to our residents?
I guess I was trying to answer that and elaborate on anything that you want me to after, kind of provide a basic answer, so our basic answer is we're aware of the increased transmission throughout the country. We've evaluated our position amongst other areas of the, of the country to try to understand from a relative standpoint where we, where we are at. Also learn from those areas to see what tools we should be thinking about, and should they be different than the ones that we've employed previous? So mitigation efforts are still on the table for us in our, in our plan. Kind of dialing one direction or the other, based on, on what is occurring on the ground and what's advised by public health officials, I would expect as your administrator to continue to counsel with the Pierce County Public Health Director, he's been our primary expert in advice. We've done that, we did that recently, a few days ago. And have some, you know, have a schedule for her to come back and provide a report to the council on things that she thinks that we should be thinking about. In the interim, between that time, we'll continue to speak with, with Ms. Snyder about what we should be doing right now, she's not recommending that we move back to a phase, our previous phase of our plan. We are going to be rolling out with our employees, kind of reemphasizing what our current expectations are, which are primarily around whether or not you're vaccinated, what we expect your behavior to be in travel and other things. We are also looking at collecting better information about where we stand for the employee groups, as far as who is vaccinated in order to, to work on our continuity of service. And then we plan to increase our involvement or kind of re-up our involvement in the Do Your Part campaign, which is a collection of a number of groups in the community, Alina, the UW, CBTC, the school district, the city, and both public healths. Raising awareness about what you can do to impact the trajectory of what's going to, what's going to happen likely based on what's happening in the rest of the country, starting with vaccination efforts and then also thinking about other mitigation efforts. I also would expect regardless of what's recommended, or I would say in addition to what's recommended by public health, as a public facing, public service entity, we may take steps when we're providing service that are not necessarily required or recommended as minimum steps by public health, but something we feel is a courtesy to our customers. So we may be including measures in our, kind of next phase of this is, you know, if we're entering into people's homes, we're going to consider what they would want us to do when entering into their home. So right now, if you're a vaccinated city employee, you can enter into somebody's home and do the work, and, and that's, there's no CDC guidance that you shouldn't be doing that. But we may decide that we want to take extra measures to protect our customers or give them additional comfort, so we're going to look at some of our customer service things separately or in addition to what we would do for continuity of service and setting an example following what public health would like us to do, so I don't know if that answered your question.
It covers some, although I do have a question there on the recommended CDC guidance, it's my understanding that the CDC was recommending universal masking, and counties that have a substantial or minor incidence of COVID transmission. And currently both Pierce and St. Croix County are in that category.
Yes, and as we have before, the Pierce County Public Health Director has pointed out that CDC first comes out with their recommendations, then the state of Wisconsin looks at whether or not they will adopt it. And the counties then follow some of that guidance, and there's been a few instances in the past where Pierce County Health has not recommended exactly what now CDC is based on what's going on in our community, in our county, and then specifically for our workforce, she gives us specific advice about our workforce, so.
It's really that following the CDC guidance.
So as of now, we, we have not adopted masking for vaccinated employees in indoor settings, which is some of the initial guidance that's come out from CDC. And we'll be, we'll be discussing with Pierce County about what their recommendation is for us to do that.
What about mitigation efforts that the city could do for individual residents? If we look internationally, we can see that nations like Germany and Austria, which made FFP two, equivalent to the US N ninety-five standards, masks readily available to members of their public, are experiencing substantially lower rates of transmission than the surrounding areas. At a cost of dollars a week for an individual. As the city consider, or have you considered looking at any methods like that? If we look at the expected duration of this wave of potentially three months, we'd be looking at an overall cost of less than a hundred thousand dollars to ensure that every resident for the city had two hundred and ninety-five masks that we provided.
So, so we have considered internally and in our discussion of public health options for the city to be a direct provider of PPE. We've also discussed internally the city's ability and the desirability of us being also an incentive provider for vaccinations, so both of those things are in consideration, neither, neither have been recommended or made, kind of made it to the, yeah, let's, let's do this or take this to the city council for for inclusion, because both of those options would include spending money, likely greater than twenty-five thousand in the case of the PPE, I don't, the incentives likely wouldn't necessarily be that much, but at this point, we haven't come to any internal consensus that that's a good role for us to play. Certainly, council has the ability to push us along in that, if they'd like to do that faster, I'd say the one that's, on the PPE, there's it's anecdotal, I guess, at this point, but it's anecdotal that there's adequate PPE availability to, to most folks, most private venues and others have, are offering guests and other folks the ability to do that, you can always grab a couple extra when you're in there, and so I'm not sure there's a PPE shortage, certainly if we get to the N ninety-five, that's a different discussion, but surgical masks and others are right, readily available at this point and reasonably affordable, but that's just the status, I guess I'm reporting, I don't, not sure I wanted it to be an editorial comment, but staff is not prepared at this point to recommend that we're a direct provider of PPE. Nor are we ready to recommend that we do an incentive program for vaccination, but those are two things certainly being considered by many cities and, and including us.
What as council should we be looking at for the economic impact of having several percent of our population requiring advanced medical care as a result of this?
That's a question I'm not prepared to answer. I think we are still consulting and trying to understand exactly what the projections might be for us as a community. The alarm has not been raised by the medical community to the city yet. And we are in communications with them, so at this point, there's a feeling that things are concerning but stable, and that the emphasis is still on encouraging people to get vaccinated.
Ms. Ray? If I may ask, Assistant City Administrator Stroh, in the past, you've been in close contact with county health directors, I assume that's still the case?
It is, I spoke with Eazy Snyder, Pierce County Health Official, as recent as Friday. I typically, just, I think by the nature of kind of where most of our city lies, I work with Pierce County more frequently than St. Croix. I did send Eazy and Kelly Engen, the St. Croix County Health Official, correspondence as recent as this morning with a list of kind of some, reminding them of matters we are and are not currently doing for our municipal staffing facility and operations, and asking them if they had any input or suggestions for anything different, I had, I got an auto reply out of the office for Eazy for the week, so I'm honestly hoping she's taking a well-meaned week off, and I have not yet heard back from the St. Croix County official. I would say prior to Friday, I talk with Eazy at least once a week.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ray? Is there a chance for us to do a workshop or something like we did with public health, like tonight, where we, I, I think this will become more clear once school starts as to how fast and rapid this might escalate? Would we have the ability in early September, mid-September to have a discussion with it, would you be available to, would someone be available to create that community with public health so that we have a better understanding of how things are going once school started? Because I think, from what I'm hearing, that's really the, the trigger for communities is they're, they're concerned about unvaccinated children and mask mandates and not, and all that good stuff, so school starting might really be the road back to where we were a year ago.
Yeah, I guess I'm not. So yes, yes, I don't, I don't want to say yes, that is the, the trigger that we're back already, those are your comments, and I think those, those may be reasonable comments given what I've seen in the community recently, but the answer is yes, we can facilitate a meeting, in particular Pierce County Public Health has agreed. Essentially, whenever we ask her to, to appear, she is happy to do so. We already tentatively scheduled it for, is it the next week or the one after?
The next one, she's tentatively consulted it in, waiting for me to let her know. Or, or a kind of a pre-meeting briefing.
Okay, and so it'd be something that would be public, but we would have more ability to have more of a conversation than we do when we're up here like this?
I think, I don't want to misspeak, there's, we, the answer is yes, we can do whatever the council's pleasure. Tentatively, what has been discussed is the idea of her doing a public health briefing, which, which would be at the podium, and certainly, I think you can answer ask questions, in terms of a less formal workshop, we also could do that, it's just a matter of scheduling and then taking a look at what other workshops may already be on the docket, I think, and, and I think if I'm hearing you correctly, a workshop form may be the better form, maybe perhaps for what you're looking for. So we can just look at availability.
That would be great, thank you.
Is there interest by the council in a different agenda item or a specific, or specific agenda item that the council is interested in us doing, other than what I'd consider an update with the Q and A ability? Otherwise, we're kind of planning to keep the dialogue going with, with, with staff of public health. I would tell you that I'm, I'm not sure that any of the, either the incentive or the PPE thing can bubble to the recommended level to council, at, at that point, obviously, we'd come to council on an agenda item if we do that. And for measures for, for the employees and for our facilities, as we've done in the past, I wouldn't wait for the council to say that's okay to do, we would if we believe that it's recommended and this circumstance dictate, it'll be an email from the city administrator to staff saying, this is, this is what we're doing, this is how we're going to operate our facilities starting tomorrow, or I, we are fully expecting there'll be changes to our operational model in the next ten days. Whether it's, I don't think it's likely this week, I think it's more likely that there'll be depending on how the data plays out and the recommendation from Pierce County, it's likely something we, we would start next week with changes to our operations, I, I want to remind the council, which, which Assistant City Administrator Stroh reminded our staff today. The CDC recommendations are quite different than they were the last time around workplaces. Last time, they were recommending work from home, and that was a distinct recommendation. That's not included in the recommendations, now the CDC is saying working at work is fine, just do these measures. And so I don't see or predict some kind of significant change to our work from home versus city hall, be it open, library, those kind of things, because it doesn't appear that that's the likely recommendation, they're probably going to focus on large gatherings again. And so we don't necessarily have a lot of those with our day-to-day operations. But this is coming at us just like it's coming at you, so we're, we're kind of looking at things as they come each day, but I suspect that we plan to continue our services. We aren't likely to close our shop and send everybody home again, we're likely to look more at the mitigation efforts that we can keep people working safely while they're here, and again, probably taking some measures that are beyond in the name of courtesy and customer service. Because at the end of the day, we're providing services to people directly, and if they're more comfortable having our employee wear a mask, then expectation is likely to be put on a mask, city employee, whether you're vaccinated or not, and whether you want to or not. It's something we can do as courtesy, so we're working through that right now.
Okay, anybody else, anything?
I, I do have interest in the, the PPE aspect that you brought up, and I think that that is something that's been neglected in public policy that the city has an opportunity to be a leader on with a significant return on any public investment in terms of community health and the economic impact that that can have on the community. So that is something that I would be appreciative of seeing.
And specifically for that, if you have an example of, it's possible we'd be a leader, so there wouldn't be examples, but if you have an example of a program you think is as successful in the city, and it doesn't have to be a US city. Staff would certainly be interested in, in seeing that so that we can understand the, kind of the implementation side of that a little bit better. And that would be, that would inform us on how it can and should be implemented successfully if somebody else has already done it with, with good results.
Most certainly, I will forward you examples of that. And we can, I believe, when it would be an appropriate time, I'd discuss it before the council, that that be on the agenda or on the next administrator's report.
I think the next administrative report is probably an acceptable place for that, and then again, I wouldn't be surprised if we go to more regular updates from public health at least once a month. And so there'll be kind of this check our I want to say roadmap, but that's the wildcat. I, I want to say roadmap, but that's the wildcat. Our Russian code and plan, um, we'll follow, we'll likely put an update on that. At a minimum, we'll have better numbers. So we want to try to get some better numbers. And we're still dealing with, we can't always narrow it down to even zip code. We're still a lot of times dealing with county numbers, which is you know, challenging because we'd like to think we're better than the rest of the county and some of these things, but we're not. That doesn't, we don't know.
With fifty percent of our workforce plus committed to other counties. This is the preferred level behind here.
Right, but it, it would be helpful to understand that we knew what our percentages were running in the city, at, at least by residents, which is what the databases typically have. Um, because we get, if, if we only had thirty percent of our residents vaccinated, that would be important to know because it'd change the mitigation that you likely were trying to implement versus if we knew seventy-five percent of our residences, residents were vaccinated, that would public health could likely give us different mitigation strategies.
As we, uh, looked at the timeline on this, I think the start of, of school was mentioned as a inflection point to what we're going to be looking at. And it appears from examining early data from around the country, but that isn't the case. Um, however, looking at the recent expansion and spread within both Pierce and St. Croix counties, uh, forty thousand cases in St. Croix County yesterday, for example. I'm not sure that our timeline is one that you can push back here on. The proper time for taking positive corrective action, averting costs to our community and residents. Uh, there's going to be rather a sorry, but yes, we have a next meeting to discuss that.
Yeah, I, we expect to have an update from Pierce County Health at the next meeting. So it'll be an agenda item. And I would guess there's pretty wide ability to have conversation around what the city should do within that agenda item.
There is, and it may be, you know, at that time, you know, we could look to have a scheduled meeting sooner than the next meeting if necessarily, if, you know, Pierce County Health recommends it. By, you know, at the next meeting, you can ask questions with pretty broad discretion regarding what measures Pierce County Health might recommend the city take to address the, the COVID issue.
Okay, great. You can motion for adjournment?
To adjourn. Second.
First and second to adjourn. Christine?
First by beer set, second by more set, all in favor?
Aye.